Good job. We'll call the meeting order. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions. All right, welcome everyone. Tom, could you please do the roll call?
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Here.
Councilmember Peshusta.
Present.
Ellie.
Present.
Postma.
Present.
Baker.
Right here.
Baskin.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number one is adoption, a motion for the adoption of the agenda with the one addition.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number two is a motion approving our amendments from our meeting of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries. Interestingly enough, under recognitions award, we have plenty. I first want to introduce Judith Vilar. Judith is our mayor for the day, came to us through the benevolence of Sue Groves in the bidding process of the Austin Mayor Foundation for the Love of Austin. Sue bid high enough and had Judith in mind to tag along with me today. And so she has made very wonderful decisions for the city, and you all see those coming your way very soon. Turned complete control over to Judith Vilar, but she is an absolute delight. Graduate of Austin High School and Riverland Community College, and going on to Winona State to become an education major, and wants to come back and teach at Southgate. Very specific, and I can tell you from spending the time with her today, that whatever she wants to do, she will find success. She is an absolute gem. We're gifted to have her and her family here in Austin, and it's been outstanding. So thank you, Judith, and welcome to the Diaz. Most. I'm usually pretty timid with the gavel, but Judith was, she knows how to do this. We also have a retirement. Werner Schlichter is here from the Waste Water Treatment Plant. And Werner, my math, Pacheli math tells me it was thirty-nine years with the city of Austin.
Correct.
So Werner Schlichter with this plaque in appreciation for the service of the city of Austin from May twenty-one, nineteen eighty-four. I was almost going to graduate high school about moments from that, to May twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-three at the Waste Water Treatment Plant, respectfully presented by the city of Austin City Council and Mayor Stephen King. So congratulations on that kind of tenure. We appreciate your years and years of service. Step up and Stephen, you might want to say some words to Werner. Please, if you wanted to say anything, you're welcome to. Otherwise, man a few words. You want your plaque? Congratulations.
Thank you. And all of these people.
Bernie, congratulations.
Years of council members, forty years of mayors.
Oh, come on. We want to hear them all.
Really big people. A couple stand out, Mayor Bonnie Reese. People like that. But it's forty-year service, practically forty, and really an up and down, little ups and downs as your career goes along. Very good career, and very thankful to the citizens of Austin for all need to serve now. And it was a neat career, and the people you meet, which just create.
Well, and you had some of the best scenery in Austin for almost forty years. That had to be helpful. Exactly what I'm talking about. Well, thank you, Werner. Appreciate those years of service. We don't get that very often. Obviously, in society, we don't have people sticking around that long, and we appreciate what you've given to us for those many years.
Oh, I'm very thankful and very grateful for it.
Thank you. Happy retirement.
Thank you.
Also on the recognitions and awards, Discover Austin update from Nancy Schnabel. Nancy.
All right. Thanks so much, Mayor, and it's always a pleasure to present our annual report. Looks like you got quite a lengthy agenda, so I'll make it fast and furious here. I think all of you got the annual report in your packet, so I'll just run through that really quick. Most of you are probably familiar with Petunia, our pink promoting pig. She was a rock star for us in twenty twenty-one. She was making the magic happen, so we just continued rolling with her. She squealed throughout the Midwest throughout twenty twenty-two as well. And so she went to Pork Power in Minnesota. She attended the Bacon Bash in Wisconsin, Ragby in Iowa. There was about eighteen thousand bikers that were able to see her, and she squealed at them as they rode by. The old Midwest Old Thresher in Illinois, Mall of America, Memorial Day, she spent it in the Bacon Capital USA. And then she went on a road trip through Iowa, South Dakota, and Western Minnesota throughout the entire month of May for twenty twenty-two. So definitely got around, did some great job promoting for Austin. And then at the end of twenty twenty-two, we put her out to the pasture as we started new marketing programs for twenty twenty-three. So you'll see a lot of pictures of the different places that she was able to go, and she was a great marketing opportunity for us. In twenty twenty-two, there was a few new things that brought visitors into the Austin community. Some of you are probably familiar with the Big Fork, that sculpture that is out in front of Corporate North. That also complimented the celebration of the power of the people and the food and the purpose, and so that welcomed a lot of visitors into our community for that concert. A lot of celebrations in twenty twenty-two. The Life Maur County celebrated their seventieth anniversary. SPAM had an eighty-fifth birthday anniversary. We had the Hormel Institute with an eightieth anniversary. KSMQ had a fiftieth anniversary. So we partied a lot in Austin in twenty twenty-two, and that was great for tourism as it brings in those visitors and highlights us for many of our wonderful attributes. We opened up the New Tech Bioscience Building in Business Park. And Austin actually has our own hometown soccer team now called the Austenville FC, and they formed in twenty twenty-two, and sounds like they had a pretty successful record and are well on their way in twenty twenty-three. One of our goals is that a lot of communities have sunflower fields where visitors come in and take pictures. And so Cotter Sunflower Fields opened up in twenty twenty-two and allowed people to take pictures there. And then the Bird Scooters came to Austin in twenty twenty-two as well. We included a lot of, a lot more visitors in twenty twenty-two. Some of you may be familiar with the movie A League of Their Own. We had one of the actors that came to the Hormel Institute. And then along Interstate ninety, we've got a few hotels up there, and so we took a semi and put a big banner on it that said, Welcome Bikers. And we got tagged in a lot of biker photos of people that were on their way to Sturgis for that month of August. And so we also do a lot of promotions at trade show booths and that sort of thing. We do thousands of SPAM cookies that we hand out at these trade shows. And Mr. Peterson, the Commissioner for the Minnesota Department of Agriculture, stopped by our booth, and you'll see in the annual report, he is enjoying one of those SPAM cookies. And so that was kind of fun to be able to talk to him. We hosted the English Springer Spaniel National Championship here in Austin, as well as the Thirty-Fifth Annual Minnesota State Road O. And so that is buses, like the Smart Buses. They got to do competitions out at Riverland, and they were here for a while. And then we also welcomed forty-five embassy officials specializing in food and agriculture to the Hormel Institute. So just kind of a snapshot, a wide variety of different visitors that come into our community. And that also included the Minnesota Gophers Men Hockey Team. They came and played in Riverside Arena, too. So. New things in our office that happened in twenty twenty-two. We continue to work our way towards getting through the pandemic. The pandemic was pretty crazy in the tour and travel industry. And so we had some help from the city to create a new tourism recovery sales position. And so we hired Sarah Wilson at the beginning of the year. And she has done a great job helping us be successful and sustainability going into our future. You'll see in there a list of some of the groups that she contracted for twenty twenty-two. There's only one that was able to actualize in twenty twenty-two, and the rest of them are filling the pipeline for twenty-three and twenty-four and twenty-five. Total for twenty twenty-two, she booked just shy of a thousand room nights, and so that was pretty good for the first year. And she continues to work on that throughout twenty twenty-three as well. We also have a lot of things going on. We had a great support system as I was out on FMLA Lee for a few months in the summertime, and so special thanks to everybody who stepped in to help for that. And then in September, first part of October, we hired Mary Thury. She was actually, came up to Austin to visit, and she liked it so much that her and her husband actually moved up here. And so it all starts with a visit, and we are seeing some of the great things from that. We do a lot of different ways of promoting. We talked about Petunia the Pig, but our biggest one that we do as far as hands-on is our visitor guide distribution. We print about twenty-five thousand visitor guides every year. There are thirty-two page publication that kind of highlights everything in Austin, from food to lodging events, things to do, attractions. We mailed about fifteen hundred of them. We emailed about three thousand of them, and we displayed about twenty thousand of them. And they get displayed in wayside rest areas, travel information centers. And at the end of the year, when we check in with them, there was very few leftovers. So a lot of those went off the shelves into consumers' hands. We also, for the first year ever, did a Marvelous Maur County Visitor Guide. I think I put that in front of you. That's just a way that we can enhance not only when people come to Austin, but they also can enjoy some of the things that happen in Maur County. So the longer they stay in our area, the more economic impact it brings. So just highlighting some of the things that they can do outside of the community, but yet staying overnight in Austin. Tour and travel, those motor coach buses that come into Austin are a huge revenue source for us. They're starting to come back after the pandemic. We were able to welcome seventy-seven of them in twenty twenty-two. That is a twenty-five percent increase over twenty twenty-one, so they're coming back. And then also, the size of the groups are coming back. We had just shy of twenty-five hundred travelers in those seventy-seven groups. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the groups were a lot smaller. They're starting to get bigger and more of them. So obviously, Minnesota is our top state, but they also came from Pennsylvania, Michigan, Ohio, Missouri, North Carolina, Kansas, and Illinois. So those ones that come from out of state often stay overnight. We are funded by lodging tax, and so you'll see there that the overnight travelers, we were about a hundred and seventy-four thousand. That is a twenty percent increase year over year. We're still trying to get back to pre-pandemic levels. We're just not quite there yet. So we'll keep working on it. Social media is huge for us. Our Facebook continues to grow. Our Instagram continues to grow. And in twenty twenty-two, we started a YouTube channel. And so if you go to Discover Austin, Minnesota YouTube, you will see that there's about eleven different videos on there. So be sure to check that out as well. I include the Minnesota annual report in there, so you can just take a peek at that. Kind of, they're usually a year or two behind, and so you can look at that if you'd like. And then on the last page, you'll see our twenty twenty-two Board of Directors. There's some familiar faces in here. So Mike is our city liaison, so a special thanks for all he does, keeping that communication going. And then Dave is not here, but he is also our park and rec liaison as well. Real quick, a new for twenty twenty-three, as we kind of look a little into our future, we started a new podcast that we send out podcasts usually about every other week that goes out. So you can check that out, JustAustinMN Podcast. We also have some three-D letters that spell out the word Austin. It's a great photo opportunity, and if you haven't seen them, they'll be at Fourth Avenue Fest, so be sure to check them out there. New events that we helped with this year, a new idea came down from Canada. It was actually Paint the Ice at Packer Arena. So collaboration with Austin Park and Rec and the Austin Artworks Center, we were able to welcome a few hundred people to Packer Arena on the ice before it melted away. So we got some nice footage and drone coverage of that. Also in Packer, first time was the Beer Bacon and Beignet Event. It was a fundraiser for Life Maur County, and again, we welcomed a few hundred people in there that maybe had never been in Packer Arena before. So we talked about that tourism sales recovery position. They are working on solidifying a two-year contract with the Pro Horseshoe Tour. And so we will be using the Austin City Horseshoe Bits for that. And then if you are into yoga, there is Lama Yoga happening out at the fairgrounds in a couple weeks. We are welcoming a drummer group flying in from Hawaii. That'll be here on July second. And so if you want to see some Hawaiian drummers, stop down to Band Shell for that. Back this year is the Minnesota Mountain Bike Race. They were off last year, but they're coming this year, and that'll be the same weekend as the Austin Artworks Festival. And then currently, we are working on hosting the Minnesota State Legion Baseball Lodging. That'll actually be in a local community close to us, but they need some hotel rooms for a community that doesn't have any. And so we look forward to welcoming them, as well as the National Softball Association for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. So lots going on in our little office right now, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Nancy, did you touch on the folks with public television that are coming to Austin to feature us in one of their episodes of a national TV show, basically? But they're going to be here for like five, six days. Could you touch on that a little bit?
Yep, absolutely. So it's called Main Street Productions, and they will actually be here the end of August. So they'll see all the beautiful flowers downtown, and it will be a thirty-minute episode all about Austin. They will showcase the history of Austin, what we have going on, some of our events. They're here for about five days doing A-roll and B-roll, and then the production will actually come out in March of twenty twenty-four, which will be ideal for people looking for places to travel on spring break and throughout the summer. So it'll be aired nationwide, and as well as we will try and get it on our local public television station as well.
Thank you. Nancy, could you touch on the golf tournament that we're having in a few weeks?
Absolutely. So part of the tourism recovery sales position, she reached out to the American Junior Golf Association and found out that they do not have a qualifying tournament in the Midwest. And so with a lot of help from different partners, Austin was selected to host it. It will actually be in July this year, and then it will be in June of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five because it is a three-year contract. And we actually just got an email from them that as of five twenty-five, there is a hundred and thirty-two boys and fifty-two girls that have applied to be part of it. They come from all over the country, like California, Florida, Arizona, and Hawaii, and some international players, China, Singapore, New Zealand, and Guatemala. Although not all these players will get in, it's great to see the interest of these people coming to Austin, Minnesota. The application deadline actually goes till June thirteenth, so we're still accepting applications at this time. But keep in mind, only sixty boys and thirty-six girls will once play in Austin. So we have a lot of people that want to come here, and unfortunately, we can only accept so many. So it's great to put Austin on the map for that, and that'll be at the Austin Country Club. So if you want to volunteer, let me know. We've got a lot of volunteer spots open.
Excellent. Thank you. A lot going on in that presentation. Your pamphlet, I mean, it's as good as I've seen. That's a lot of work, and it looks great, all those photos and a lot of information. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Just huge thank you, Nancy, to you and the staff and the board. I mean, you guys always do great work to promote Austin, and obviously, there was a little bit of a hiccup there the last couple of years with COVID, and love the approach you guys took even through COVID to keep us relevant, and it's fun to see what you're doing, you know, fully lettered at this point. So thank you. Keep up the awesome work.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Next up, under number, I have number three is DCA Strategic Plan. John Gary, why don't you hobble up here, please? Take your time. We're in no hurry. Take your time.
Thank you, Your Honor, councilmembers. First of all, I would, do I advance that or do somebody else? Oh, just this, okay. Want to go over our strategic priorities in our strategic plan from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, and a few other highlights, things like that. But you also got a copy of our annual report. On page eight shows where our Board of Directors are, and there's one, two, three of you on our board. And others have been involved in numerous ways with DCA. We have a strong board. We also have Austin Community Growth Ventures, which is focused on innovation and commercialization. And then on the next page, page nine shows who our members are. We have about sixty members, nonprofits, but mostly businesses, contributing about seventy thousand dollars. So DCA's revenue does come from the city, the Austin HRA. Maur County has contracts with us, but much of our important revenue comes from our members, with support from our members. So I want to highlight that before I get going here. Okay, our strategic priorities in the plan. This plan was put together by the involvement of many of you and other groups over the course of twenty twenty-two. I just want to highlight them a little bit. And actually, some of you are so involved in this, please add something if you just wave your hand. First thing is more about that, I think, who we are from a marketing standpoint and what we should build on. So we have a destination for businesses, innovators, and entrepreneurs, the intersection of food, health, agriculture, and bioscience. And actually, in the midst of this is when the farm announcement was made, so it kind of really doubled down, and that this is the right way to focus. So with the Hormel Institute, with Hormel Foods, with the strong agriculture, this is an obvious opportunity for us. Another thing is to continue to focus on entrepreneurs. I'll get into this a little bit. DCA is a very active small business development center that doesn't only, that supports small businesses, but also those who are contemplating some entrepreneurial ideas. Support those businesses that are already here. We heard that loud and clear from many of our stakeholders. While we're delighted that a New Tech Bioscience comes to the community, many businesses have opportunities. These are businesses that have been here for a long time, and we support them. So partnering with the Port Authority and others to make sure that happens. And then lastly, and I'll get into this also, but that idea that Austin, especially with the workforce challenges and funding workers and retaining talented workforce, is what can DCA do more of to support us being a world-class destination for people to work and live? So that was the fourth thing, and I'll talk more about that. So how do we implement the strategic plan? I have kind of four-legged stool, let's say, four buckets. You got that recruiting, marketing to out-of-town businesses. New Tech would be an example of that type of work. Supporting local businesses, our Small Business Development Center does a lot of the work there. Commercialization, innovation. We, and actually tomorrow, we have a session with Hormel Institute scientists, involving some people from the University of Minnesota, to talk about ways that they can take their ideas and their discoveries and start building more data, more research to get them into the market. And then that last one I mentioned is the Quality of Life bucket. I'll get into that a little bit, but Impact Austin, you're familiar with. And then another effort we're doing with Revocity, which is a real estate fund. So looking back in twenty twenty-two, I think the highlight of the year for many of us was the opening, ribbon cutting, beginning of operations for New Tech Biosciences. Beautiful day in August with the Gear Daddies, good party. But I think, there's a couple of things about this I want to point out, and Mike, Postma, you know, is how well the hiring process went for them. So many of the questions that a new company contemplating Austin has are around, will I find the workers I need? And I think with the example of New Tech, they were really satisfied with the quality of the applications. They're still hiring, I think now. But very, very happy with the, with the quality and the number of applicants they got. As you, as you know, they're contemplating additional expansions, operations in Austin, so we continue to support them. This next slide is about Austin Community Growth Ventures. This is a five oh one C three nonprofit. It's sort of a subsidiary of DCA in partnership with the Hormel Foundation. Does things such as launch our coworking space downtown. There's a picture of that. And then we're going to do some early innovation grants for scientists. That'll be announced tomorrow. Very active in twenty-two with Business Resiliency Grants. So this is a program with the county support from deed and the operations. Idea being, for future economic shocks, how can businesses be better prepared for their business interruption, or not having a business interruption? On the left side of this slide, I have some of the types of things that businesses did. The county funded it. They initially put up a hundred thousand dollars. By the time it was over, we did just under seven hundred thousand dollars in grants. One thing that was unique about this program is that we required applicants to also register with the Small Business Development Center. So it made sense for a few ways, because I have consultants who can help process their grant that way through the Small Business Development Center, but also gives a bigger picture to how their business is doing. So it's not just this one specific thing, like a new website. It's in the context of their whole business. You see here that, well, it's on a different slide, but a hundred and thirty-nine grants. Much of those grant dollars were spent locally, about seventy percent, we figure, about one point two million dollars were part of these grants. So we did, we were able to catalyze the grant funds. Just said much of this stuff. It was a countywide program, which is important. So about ninety-six of the hundred and thirty, I guess I have a hundred and thirty-two there. But, but about the right proportion of grants were in Austin and non-Austin groups or businesses. Also, we got a good representation, diverse representation. About half the businesses were women-owned businesses. Just looking back, so including the resiliency grant and other grants we've done since the beginning of COVID, we've done, I think, three hundred and eighty-five small business grants since then, countywide, about three million dollars. The city helped on that first wave of grants. I think about seventy thousand came from the city, but a very active few years for DCA on this front. Mentioned the Small Business Development Center. Generally, we have a very busy Small Business Development Center. SBDC started in two thousand sixteen. And then you see the uptick in clients and hours. We had mostly related to that grant process. So we had those businesses participate in meeting with the SBDC at least one time to be eligible for the grant. Small Business Development Center, a little background on that. It's free to the business. We contribute half the funds, the state SBDC. So we have matching funds, dollar-for-dollar matching funds, free to the business. Then we have consultants that we pay to provide these services. Most businesses probably meet with a consultant, I would say, twice to three times. Some can meet with a consultant, you know, up to ten times. One of our clients and loan recipients was West Oakland Auto, West Oakland. I think you had them here, didn't you? You didn't?
We went out there.
Okay, you went there. All right. So they were named the Minority Owned Small Business of the Year from Minnesota. Jose and Cecilia, great, great folks, have gone from doing business out of their garage to one location in West Oakland, and then moved to the Mapleview area out there. Growing, strong business, great people, and we're proud about our association with them. A new program we're looking at, so this kind of turned the corner. We stopped doing the resiliency grants. We had some funds left over. So the county is rolling, having us roll those into a new program. This is called the Business, well, it's going to be called the Business Forgivable Loan Program, but it's about business succession. So it's going to help business owners sell their business. That's the idea. Retirement age, many people are retirement age with a small business in Austin. This is a way to get them to exit their business and for us to meet that new owner. And then the new owner will have, this kind of describes the program, but up to twenty-five thousand dollar loan, be forgivable over five years. So if they stay in business, it'll be reduced by twenty percent a year over five years. So after five years, if they're still going, they, there is no loan, and it's just like a grant. We've gotten good feedback on this program. Again, the county's funding it, up to two hundred thousand dollars to start with. It'll be kind of operated through a Small Business Development Center, too. I mentioned this real estate fund briefly, but an important part of what we want to do, we're partnering with a group called Revocity. Revocity is out of Northfield. Very active in Southern Minnesota right now. They have established these real estate funds, Rochester, Albert Lee, Winona, Otana, Faribault, Sika, Northern Minnesota, Grand Rapids, Grand Marais. It's a real estate fund that does, is going to partner with DCA in a general partnership. And then we're going to look for limited partners. We want to raise three to five million dollars, and with that money, real estate investments, they have a community impact and a market return of about eight to twelve percent annualized. So the, what we're hoping is to do some projects with local developers instead, so somebody's already got a project in mind, we would come in and partner with them on the investment, or possibly some projects of our own. The types of projects they've done have ranged from rental units, like downtown Northfield has a nice housing development, new hotel in Otana, older buildings in Faribault. They own about twelve buildings in Faribault that are going to be rehabbed. An industrial building rehabbed in Northfield. So a wide variety of types of projects on this, and I think by the end of this year, we should have an investment or two. I just have a slide on why we're doing this. It's important, I think, many people look for ways to participate in a, in a way that has a true impact beyond volunteering. I think this is a way where people who have the finances to be able to do it can actually literally invest in Austin beyond the investment they have in their own property. So there's many people who could put twenty-five thousand dollars in a fund like this or more. But also, I think it strengthens that bond people have with the community where, yeah, it is really an investment for them. it is really an investment for them. The reason we're partnering with Revocity, I think for me, is that they bring the level of due diligence and experience to the investments, to analyze the investments so we can be confident they actually are good investments. If it's not a good investment, the investment won't be made. And lastly, got a couple of minutes here. Tager wanted me to keep going. Is that what keep?
Hurry up.
Okay. I'm going to tear up this man. Economic development has evolved somewhat. So back, I think, when DCA was established, it really was trying to recruit new business to town. And that's the case in most places, and it's still true. I think there was a recognition for some time that many of your, much of your growth comes from the businesses that are already here, so you have to kind of create a balance. But we heard in our recent strategic point, and it's very common in economic development, is that economic development organizations have to be more involved in promoting the community to the workforce, to employees. So that third leg there is kind of what we saw as a trend when we got into this. It's very true, and I just wanted to highlight our involvement with Impact Austin. This is a quality-of-life initiative that you've supported as the city. Local businesses are supporting it, but DCA will play, also play a central role. It's a way for us to implement some of our own priorities, like a better website would be one example to market the community, make sure that it, my friend Nancy's gone, but works well with like the city and the chamber in promoting Austin. But then just looks, continually looks for ways that we can align our resources in high-impact, quality-of-life initiatives to make sure Austin's, you know, strong going in the future. So I think you're familiar with Impact Austin. We will be playing a role in it sort of as a fiscal sponsor, partner in it. Let's see, there's these videos you probably all heard about. They're on the DCA website. This is our team. So we have four independent contractors right now. They're the middle group. Aaron Keenan does a lot of different things with us. Wendy Anderson is a Small Business Development Center consultant, focuses mostly on social media and marketing. Lindsay Hernandez is with Impact Austin. Juan Molina, also SBDC consultant. His expertise is in taxes, finances, business formation. And everybody in southeastern Minnesota knows who Alice Holst is, and Alice runs our place. That's the end of my presentation, Mayor.
Nice job, John. Appreciate all the work DCA is doing, very innovative to add to your, your team and add to what your responsibilities have been since the inception. So it continues to grow, so appreciate all the work. Counsel, anything for Mr. Gary?
No, John, I think the only thing from my perspective is really nice job. And I know from being on the board the last couple of years that, you know, there's a lot of big things that people see, like the New Techs, but I've just been impressed by how many behind-the-scenes things that you and the staff continue to do. And thank you, because they obviously make a huge difference in our local economy and helping our businesses and helping attract new businesses. So great job, very clear vision, clear strategic priorities for where you're going, and excited to continue working with you to move them forward.
Thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we've just witnessed some great presentations from Nancy and John on what Austin is and highlights all that's going on here and all the folks that are working out front and then behind the scenes to make us even better. So thank you for those presentations. Moving on to item number four is the consent agenda, looking for a motion with the addition.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Tommy, do you want to call that? That's good.
Councilmember Peshusta?
Aye.
Helly?
Abstain.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
Absolutely.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero with one abstaining on it. Thank you, Tom. Public hearing, item number five is a resolution reviewing a tax payment application from Elite Choice Builders. Approval or denial of the abatement is necessary. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. Elite Choice Builders, we welcome them to the community. We believe this is their first foray into our abatement program. I think they're out of Hollendale. This is at 3007 15th Avenue Southwest. A twin home valued estimated at $650,000. The abatement totaled approximately $14,745 over the five years. This is in conformance with our adopted policy. This is a public hearing. Counsel action is requested.
Counsel, anything on item number five? Anything to the public? Public hearing on item number five, tax abatement for Elite Choice Builders? If not, looking for a resolution for item number five?
So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Peshusta?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
You bet.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you, Tom. Under petitions and requests, item number six is a motion approving the 2022 audit report. Thomas?
As was presented at the last work session by Craig Popenhagen. He presented the 2022 audit report for the City of Austin, showing again, good results at the end. But our retired partner, Zane Junker, is in the audience. He did our audit for 25-plus years. Maybe he'd like to present some information. He's not out of the game of the year. So with that, we request counsel approval.
We could do a swap or something.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, reviewing a proposed ordinance for the first amendment to the natural gas supply agreement between Minnesota Municipal Gas Agency and Austin Utilities. Alex, you want to say something on this? Come on down.
I'll make this quick. So you guys may recall, in 2022, Austin Utilities, with support of the City Council, moved forward with a prepaid gas agreement with Minnesota Community Energy. So we went to pay our first bill and realized we had to do that via wire transfer, and that's a fee to us. So we made the request to MCE if we could, could move forward with an ACH payment, which doesn't charge us a fee. We thought that'd be a pretty quick, easy thing. Well, it turned into this amendment, but there were other communities that wanted the ability to be able to pay through ACH as well. So it wasn't just Austin Utilities, other municipals as well. And that's what we have in front of you for approval. The Austin Utilities Board did approve this a couple of weeks ago at our regular meeting, and pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Alex. Counsel, any questions? If not, looking for a motion for item number?
Same dollar amount, but actually, this is probably a lower dollar amount because we don't have to pay a fee, right?
Right, no fee.
Sounds good, thanks, House.
Looking for motion for item number seven A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Also, seven B is an ordinance for the adoption of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Peshusta?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
Good idea.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Alex. On to item number eight, a resolution approving a contract with MinDOT Aeronautics for operations and maintenance at the airport. Stephen?
Every two years, we enter into this agreement where MinDOT reimburses us for a portion of our operating funds at the airport. It is, as with past years, the last two-year agreement is the same dollar amount, $51,075 per year that they're willing to reimburse us. We generate about $100,000 in costs, so we will be able to be reimbursed for 100% of that eligible cost, which is a good thing. But it goes towards snow removal, electricity, utilities, summer mowing, just regular maintenance out at our Austin Municipal Airport. So we would recommend approval of this two-year agreement, which begins July 1st, 2023.
Stephen, remind me, do we do the maintenance and removal like with city staff? Or is it the company that leases the airport from us, or how does that work?
A combination of things. When it comes to snow removal, we do that with an outside contractor that we hire for snow removal at the airport. And then when it comes to lawn mowing, that is done by our airport manager, and we pay him a stipend for that. And then when it comes to electrical, we hire an outside contractor to do electrical. So it's a combination of things. Our crews are actually out there to, last week, doing crack sealing. That's done by city crew. So we look at the most cost-effective options, where it fits with our staff. We do what we can, and then other things we hire out.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Lang? I was looking for a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Peshusta?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
Yep.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution approving a contract with SEH for planning and environmental work for the Automated Weather Observation System at the Austin Municipal Airport. Stephen?
Yes, this is a system that's required by MinDOT and FAA for our airport. MinDOT has identified our system as needing replacement, so it requires us to go through a process to study available areas where this AWAS can be installed, this weather station. And this is the first part of it. Phase one is a planning and environmental review that we also would then work toward in the future. Phase two, which would be design, and phase three, which would be construction. But before you tonight is just the planning and environmental portion of the work. SEH is our airport consultant that does this work for us. It would be funded 70% state, 30% local. So we would request approval of this agreement with SEH to begin this phase one part of the project.
Counsel, any questions?
Stephen, I know these aren't your rules, but I got to ask. So we have an AWAS, and they're saying it's outdated. Why do we have to spend $60,000 for planning and environmental? Can't we just put the new one where the old one is?
Because they said so. We have to review and see. Our current one is within an area where it's not supposed to be. So we have to study and see if we have options to move it farther away on existing property. If we, if we don't have other locations for it, then we get an exemption to put it back where it currently is. So we have to research that first.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Lang? Looking for resolution for item number nine?
So moved.
Second.
Tom? Councilmember Peshusta?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
Yes.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Item number 10, reviewing an ordinance for adopting a letter of map revision approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Holly?
Yeah, Stephen could do this one, too, but just to switch it up a little. Adopting the letter of map revision into our floodplain ordinance is the final step in the process required by FEMA to remove property protected by the Turtle Creek Flood Mitigation Project from the floodplain. The project was completed in late 2020 and work on the final letter of map revision. Approval process began in early 2021. The levees protected approximately 10 acres and over 60 parcels. The, this ordinance is required, or this ordinance amendment is required again by FEMA and to finalize that process. Do you have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Wallace?
Holly, what kind of cost impact or other impacts do we need to be considering with this?
This actually is a benefit to the individuals that are, were previously located in the floodplain. Areas outside of the SFHA, which was, this will take them out of the special flood hazard area, will no longer have to buy flood insurance, which is usually required by their mortgage lender, although it may still be prudent to do so. But in addition, the areas outside of the special flood hazard area are not subject to our special development restrictions. So they'll be able to do renovations, add on to their homes, invest in their property without any restrictions that would be required under our floodplain, our current floodplain ordinance.
So it's a savings for the citizens that are protected, but for the city, there will be a cost to us for monitoring and maintenance. Every year, we have to monitor all the systems that we installed. We also will need to periodically, and I don't know the, the schedule for it, but we will need to certify the levees to ensure that we meet, you know, 10 years from now that the levees still meet the FEMA requirement. So there will be some ongoing city cost as part of these, all of our levees that we have built throughout the city.
And do we know, is that cost then, as a result of changing this ordinance? Or that cost kind of is, that exists regardless?
That cost exists because we chose to move forward with these projects of levees and flood control to protect the homeowners. One thing, when we started this whole program, our, our goal, our carrot to all these businesses and property owners was, once we get these levees done, once you give us easements to build these on your property, you will then receive the benefit of not having to pay flood insurance. So this is really our final promise that we had when we started this whole program.
Thank you.
And then just to add to the removal of any properties from the floodplain that can now be productive properties, we don't have to worry about potentially. I mean, we don't have to worry about going in and providing any kind of grants or hazard assistance, you know, in the case of another big flood.
Is this a complete list? Are there going to be more of these?
There should be another, there's, I think, at least one more LOMER in, in the process right now. Yeah, it would be around the YMCA, the Community Rec Center.
Do, do the homeowners get a, a letter kind of explaining that, once this is done, like you should check with your insurance and see? I mean, obviously, we don't want to take any sort of liability, but a heads up, like, hey, you should check and see because you might save yourself some money now?
Yeah, it's part of the process is sending letters to the, anybody who's impacted. Actually, it, the area that was noticed is far exceeds the actual area that's protected.
Very governmental letter.
I was going to say, is it in English?
Very formal requirements.
I did, but I did get a few calls from people asking when the LOMER would be completed and when they can drop their flood insurance. So, but this won't be effective until September of this year, September 15th of 2023.
Thank you. Any other questions? Looking for a motion for 10A, preparation of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Tom, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10B is ordinance for adoption and publication of the ordinance?
So moved.
Tom? Oh, is there a second? What do you guys want to do the second?
Second.
Okay. Good luck with that, Tom. Councilmember Peshusta?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
You bet.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Item number 11 is a motion reviewing a request for $1,000 from the 2023 contingency for conversation benches. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. We have a couple other donations come, came in for the conversation benches in downtown. We'd like to see if you'd like to match those again for two sets, and that'd cost us $1,000 out of the contingency fund.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Clark? If not, looking for a motion approving or denying the funds for 11A?
Moved to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Under item number 12, accepting donations to the City of Austin. They are also for the downtown benches. $708 is coming from the Sweet Reeds in Lisa Dale and $500 from Discover Austin, also for the downtown benches. So with those monetary gifts, looking for an approval?
So moved.
Second. Uh, Tom? Councilmember Peshusta?
Aye.
Helly?
Aye.
Posma?
Aye.
Baker?
Aye.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor. Thank you. Item number 13 is a resolution approving the third amendment to lease with the Department of Public Safety. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. Thank you, Mayor members. This allows for motorcycle testing at our Todd Park, uh, area in the parking lot there. Parking rec has no concerns with it. This is a longstanding use and a benefit to those in our community that choose to ride motorcycles.
Thank you. Council, any questions? If not, looking for resolution?
So moved.
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
You bet.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number fourteen is resolution approving budget adjustment number three. Tom?
Council has previously approved the Whitewater Rafting Project where thirty-nine thousand nine fifty of dollars are being fundraised, um, to go in addition to ten grand from the city for the Whitewater Project. So we'd like to amend the budget to include the contributions and the expense for that. Additionally, the city is moving up, been requested by Logis to move up our implementation of new software into twenty twenty-three versus when we had budgeted for it and planned for it in twenty twenty-four with the use of some fund balance from the general fund. So we're requesting council transfer funds for that project in twenty twenty-three versus a twenty twenty-four C I P project. And then to allow us to, it would allow us then to use that two hundred thousand plus two hundred thousand fund balance to pay for the three hundred thousand dollar estimated implementation costs for the new project.
Thank you. Tom, any questions for Mr. Dankert? Looking for resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number fifteen's resolution approving a limited use permit for the community welcome sign. Stephen.
This is a permit with MINDOT to allow us to install the community sign in the MINDOT right of way. Uh, so we would request approval of this sign, uh, limited use permit. It does have a ten-year limit, so every ten years it would need to be, uh, updated if so chosen. We do have other agreements like this in place, um, mainly regarding our trails. We have multiple trails that are in either Highway two eighteen north or I ninety right of way. We, we own a pedestrian bridge that crosses over I ninety near eleventh drive northeast, so we do have a few of these with MINDOT already, and this would be just another one for the community sign.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Lang, counsel?
So, I know we talked about this at a work session a couple of weeks ago. I know based on our budget conversation tonight, like, we haven't decided to move forward with the sign. Why are we making a permit now?
Correct. We, uh, we're waiting for MINDOT to get back to us with costs, um, of what our local cost share is gonna be on the overall project. They've been working on that this whole, the whole month of May. I did get some numbers late last week that we will then take back to, uh, review with the foundation, and then we'll have, well, then we'll be able to bring those forward and have that decision on this sign, a report back to the council on that. But because of bidding and, and MINDOT's train keeps moving forward, we gotta keep these things moving, and, um, and hopefully those other decisions come into play, uh, in the background.
Right.
Looking for resolution for item number fifteen?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Nope.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six one, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. I have number sixteen's resolution approving a contract with S E H Incorporated for the development of the downtown stormwater resilience plan. Stephen.
Yeah, we presented this to council previously about applying for a grant, a resiliency grant for stormwater in the downtown area. We were successful in getting it, and now before you tonight is a proposal from our consultant, S E H. They did all of our North Main flood control improvements, and they have a very good knowledge of the downtown North Main area. Uh, their proposal is in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for this planning grant. That is the amount of the grant. The matching, uh, cost would be in-kind services done through the engineering department, and we would recommend approval of this proposal from S E H for these, uh, stormwater services.
Council, any questions?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number seventeen's resolution approving a patio liquor service area for the Bickabut Incorporated doing business as Bakery Two Lounge slash the Downtown Grill. Ann.
Yes, we're moving forward with the Downtown Grill, expanding their service out into the patio area. Um, I do know that the fencing isn't completed yet, so this license would be issued upon the completion of the fencing.
Some council, any questions for Ann?
Great progress.
Looking for resolution then for item number seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Peshusta.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom. Under item number eighteen, granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. Eighteen A is a motion for address ten ten Eleventh Avenue Southwest, the Johnson Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eighteen B, address one thousand four Eleventh Avenue Southwest, the Shawback Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eighteen C, address eight eleven Seventh Avenue Southwest, the Sewell Property. In motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under eighteen D, one thousand seven Eleventh Street Northwest, the Tellis Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, eighteen E, nine eleven Thirteenth Avenue Northeast, the Walker Property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion also carries. Under item number nineteen is a discussion on sidewalks on Fifth Ave, Sixth Avenue and Twentieth Street Northwest. Um, just to kick us off, I know some residents are, are here. We've gotten some emails, and some of you have met with the property owners that will be affected, and I've spoken with a few council members and emailed texts and the like, and I just thought it was at least wise to put it on the council. Um, my feeling is, uh, we have, we continue to be at this crossroad every time we have a sidewalk discussion, and we've had our complete streets since two thousand and twelve, I believe, where the inclusions of sidewalks, we're gonna be with all street projects now. Uh, to be fair, uh, there's always been some discussion, and we haven't adhered to our policy. So my feeling is, if we're not gonna adhere to our policy, then maybe we want to readdress that. But in the meantime, having this discussion tonight, uh, just allows, um, the timeline, if council was to pass on this sidewalk, at least the timeline to remove it from construction coming, I believe, next week. So I wanted to be fair to the property owners and let the council decide what they choose to do. Uh, I am open to whatever the council does decide, but I do caution that it appears that we seem to have these discussions every time, and, and I know I had a discussion with Mr. Posma, that we, we, we understand that the policy should probably stand on its own, and us to point to the policy and say, this is why we're doing it, but, uh, that's not always the case. So I'm interested in any discussion on this sidewalks for the northwest area affected.
I'll, uh, kick this off. I, uh, I think the homeowners know they did not attend any of the three public opportunities to talk about this. I, I think they'll, I would suspect that if they want to talk about it, they'll, they'll agree to that. Um, to me, this is an important issue, and I think the mayor's right. We gotta talk about our complete streets policy because this is, I think, the tip of the iceberg. We're gonna start sidewalk work in the not-too-distant future in developments that were specifically designed not to have sidewalks, when the, the homeowners built those homes, and, and as a result, I think that's, we, we gotta start thinking this one through. Secondly, the, if I read this complete streets policy, I think that the, the policy doesn't necessarily say that the, these two sidewalks on the utility easements are necessary. Um, and that's just one, one person's reading of this. Third, I think we have to take into account what the homeowners really want. Um, you know, and if the homeowners would have shown up at the time we were having public hearings about this, after listening to them, um, I gotta tell you, I would have agreed with them, that those, the two sidewalks, uh, are, are probably not necessary. And I don't think it violates the, our complete streets policy. I think we've kind of extended this, the, the street policy to say we can build sidewalks i- in places where I don't think we're really following the letter of the complete streets policy. And so, just for fun, I would move that we eliminate this one project, which is the one that hasn't started yet. Um, I don't remember how you describe it, Stephen, and I certainly appreciate the work that you and Mitch and your staff have done on this, but I am willing to give the homeowners a pass on not attending the public meetings and, uh, prevent something that I don't think really benefits them, and I don't think they really want.
I think to add to that, one, one thing I've read as, as I, you, you look at the letters being sent to the homeowners, I, I don't think we knew what we didn't know until now we know it. If I were to read that letter, knowing that I don't have a street, a sidewalk in front of my house, and it said, street at X amount, and it says sidewalk zero, I would assume there's no sidewalk there now, so it's just a placeholder for zero. So I think going forward, we probably need to explain in that letter that there is no sidewalk out front, if you haven't noticed, and we're gonna put one there, but it's still no cost to you. I think that was just some, something that is written in that we didn't really understand the deficiency in it until, till, till now. So that's just, uh, again, out of fairness, I, I, I get it. I mean, we are, there are properties that have existed for forty and fifty years in Austin, and they have not had a sidewalk. Now, the city owns that easement. We could do that, but it, I can see both sides of it. Walkability is important. We went through this at the fourth, uh, Fourth Street Project by the cemetery. Same comments about crime and window keepers and whatever it is too close to my, and that trail, it's more of a trail than sidewalk. It's, I think anybody would agree that it's, it's a well-done and, and a nice asset to the community in that southwest side of town. But, uh, I'm just open to further discussion from council. Is, council, you want to weigh in before we get to the public?
Could, could I speak, Your Honor?
Sure. You got it, Laura.
So, um, I have a number of remarks, but specifically to answer, um, your last comment, what I want to see come out of this situation is the way we approach our street projects to change, and, and, and visiting with, um, Mitch and others in the city engineering. It, it is possible for us to do all of these street projects a year earlier, so that right now we would be talking about twenty twenty-four projects and not projects that are shovel-in-the-ground right now. Um, I would like us to, um, at least explore what the cost would be because that's gonna involve one year where we're doing double the project planning essentially to get ahead of the game. But if we were able to do that, then, for example, when the first letter went out to the homeowners, it would have had the map that we saw that showed the sidewalk. I asked, why didn't the residents get that map on the first letter? It's because that map wasn't done because they were still working on the project. So I think we, in terms of transparency, um, to the residents, should take a serious look at getting a jump ahead, um, on our street projects. I also want to say, um, I think everyone involved here are, are good people, and they're making reasonable requests, and I don't think this particular sidewalk or two sidewalks is going to make or break Austin, and whatever happens tonight, I think we can move forward with our relationships in, uh, intact. Um, I don't think anybody's gonna be surprised to hear that I'm, I support the complete streets policy. I've voted to support it in the past. Um, the complete streets allows us to build a community for the next generation, not just everyone who's here now, but who might be buying, um, those properties in the next fifty years. Um, and that does come to mind for me that, uh, we, we're not gonna be back in this neighborhood for fifty years. Do I think there might be someone who moves into that neighborhood who has small children or disability or another reason why they would like more sidewalk access? Yes, I do. Um, I, I'm not saying that means the wishes of the current residents don't count, but I think somebody, um, up here on this dais has to be keeping in mind our current residents, but also our future residents, because just focusing on the needs and wants of who's currently live, living here is not a path to a healthy, vibrant community. Um, the people who tend to use, uh, the sidewalks, um, tend to be people biking, walking, or using public transportation. They happen to be those living with disabilities, people of color, older adults, children, and low-income people. I want to be a welcoming community to those people and make them part of our community. Now, again, will one specific sidewalk do that? It absolutely will not. And I think Austin is at a bit of a tipping point where you can easily drive around and show neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, and then say, why should mine get one when this other neighborhood doesn't have them? That's true. We're, we're at that point where there are a lot of sidewalks, there's a lot of neighborhoods without them. I think we need to decide which way we're going, and I would encourage us to, uh, support our policy, which, by the way, having that policy helps our employees know what to plan for and not have to, um, uh, be wishy-washy and wonder and make alternate plans. It, it gives them sort of a solid base of this is our starting point. Um, so I think we should support the policy that we have. Um, I, I, and again, the outcome that I would most like to see is that we address how we design our projects and how we communicate with the public. I think we can do better, and we should do better, and if we had done better, we wouldn't all be here tonight trying to make a decision, um, for what's gonna happen this coming Monday.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else, counsel? Otherwise, open up to the public.
Yes.
Could you give your name and address, please?
Marine Noragard, thirteen ten, thirtieth Avenue, northeast, Austin, Minnesota. The ditch in front of the place, it's caved in. The ducks, the deer, and it stands water in it.
Marine, is it, is this related to the sidewalk on the northwest side of town, or is this something separate?
This is something separate.
Okay. Uh, could I just, before we take your issue, could I get the residents on the sidewalk issue first, please?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Sorry to be, anybody here that wishes to speak on the sidewalk issue in northwest? And please just step forward and name an address, please, for the record.
Well, we know some of you and some of them we haven't met, but my name is Jim Moan. This is Linda, my wife. Uh, we do have some neighbors here. I had a whole list of things I was gonna go through with you, but the biggest reason that we're here is because we didn't attend the meetings, because we weren't worried about, it said, street improvements. Great. It said, we're gonna fix your street. Yeah, we needed it. He said nothing about a sidewalk. Nothing.
We don't believe there was any transparency. We, we felt bad that it's coming down to the wire now too, but we obviously would have done something a lot sooner if we had known about this. We found out when they started the utility work, and, uh, we had a lot of activity there. We happened to be talking to one of the workers out there, and that's when we, we found out about it. There were some members of the two cul-de-sacs that did attend the open house, three that I personally know of. I've visited with quite a few of the neighbors. Two of them, I guess, did come away with the knowledge that there was gonna be a proposed sidewalk on Twentieth Street to Sixth Avenue to the cul-de-sac there. There were, none of them came away with the knowledge that they had proposed a sidewalk from nineteenth Street to twentieth Street. Um, I think that's why we didn't have a lot of opposition, because, um, even last week, when I was trying to contact people, they weren't aware of this at all. So how can you object to something if you're not aware of it?
Appreciate that.
That's the biggest thing, was the transparency. Uh, if we would have known this at the beginning, we would have canceled whatever we had going. Some people were out of town, out of state. Uh, we have members that can, of our cul-de-sac that can't be here tonight because of medical problems, other issues, so you can't always attend all the meetings. But we would have canceled what we had going on if we would have known about this, so we could have gave you our objection to it and why it is not feasible, in our opinion. Uh, there's a safety hazard that you better start looking at from nineteenth Street to twentieth Street. There's quite a bit of grade coming down there now. How many of you got kids? You got bicycles? How many of them go whooping down the sidewalk and don't look at an intersection? Every one of them. Trudy Inger is scared to death that somebody's gonna get killed coming down that hill, because there's a blind spot because of Inger's house, which has been there since nineteen seventy-nine with no sidewalk. Plus, you have a utility pole with a light. Are you gonna put a crash barrier around that so when they do a header into it? I mean, you know, this is common sense. You can't teach common sense. Uh, I guess the thing that irks a lot of us is, I don't need that. We're the ones that actually went in there, bought the land, we built houses, we developed this property, and now someone without a nickel's worth of their own money is coming in threatening our safety, our security, and our privacy, because you're gonna run a sidewalk through our backyard, Ingers, plus you're gonna bring more people into that area, and let's face it, we have a lot of good And let's face it, we have a lot of good citizens in this town, but we got some real lowlifes, too. And every one of you know it. So, why should we be happy that you're doing this to us? Like I said, we would've objected quite some time ago, but we didn't know about it. So you have your plan, which is great, but, uh, if you're gonna put a sidewalk in somewhere, go talk to the people that live there. Don't just have some guy looking on his plat book, "God, let, here, let's put a sidewalk here and there and there and there," with no regard for the people that live there, for what it's gonna do to their property values, what it's gonna do to that neighborhood, okay? And there are some little kids that live down on Twentieth Street. When we come into, into there, we slow down because we know there's kids there. There are occasions where people don't know that's a dead-end cul-de-sac, they'll come whipping in there pretty fast, and Jason lives on a cul-de-sac. What are they doing to get to the bottom? Out the hole. So, that's another safety concern. We bought there because, yeah, it's safe, it was private, we didn't have to worry about people in our backyard, so I guess that's the biggest reason that we're here, is because we didn't know about it. So the city needs to do a lot better job in informing the citizens of what you're gonna do. If you don't, you're gonna have a bigger mess than this, because the people that are paying the taxes and are voting aren't gonna be real happy. I know this is a late, because you've got your projects all lined up, but we didn't actually believe it when we heard that somebody had a wild-ass idea to put a sidewalk down there. Uh, we actually built a swale for runoff because of the grade coming down there, and we've, someone, we explained what the problem was. The landscaper that built this swale for us found out about it. You know what he said about the sidewalk? He says, "That's not a good idea." So, and he's a professional, actually, a friend of mine was a mayor in a small town around here, and he was on their city council for twenty-some years. You know, I'm talking to him this morning, this morning, you know what he said? Sidewalks are overrated. And this guy was in city government for twenty-some years. Uh, I could go on and on and on, and I had a nice little speech, just like the lesson plans I used to do when I was in school, I kinda boarded them once in a while, like, when I got through them. But I wanted to leave with you with something that I was told by a former director that I had at the tech school, which is now Riverland. She had a saying, it says, "If you have a problem, don't come to me and bitch, have a solution. We have a solution for you." And that's for a council member to, uh, make a motion to rescind the sidewalk portion of this project, and for another mo, council person to second that motion, and then rescind it. I think it's time for you to do the right thing, consider the people in this pro, in this cul-de-sac. That's simply, is what I, all I had to say, because I think it's, it's a pioneer sky idea from the engineer's office. And I had a little blurb in there, too, about the connectivity that Laura was talking about, and I don't think anybody has ever turned down a job in Austin because they didn't have enough sidewalks and connectivity. It's not the field of dreams, build it and they will come, it's just a sidewalk, but it's interrupting our security and our safety and our peace of mind, simple as that. And I feel it as a detriment to our property value, because I'm gonna have everybody and his brother going through my backyard, so. So I don't know what else I can say. You got anything to add? Nope. Thank you for your time and listening.
Thank you, Moans. Uh, sure. Thank you. I think the, the, I know the intent of the city council back in two thousand twelve was to, to be a connective city with streets and sidewalks and to, to make it safer for the pedestrians rather than put them on the street, so I, I kinda take a little bit umbrage on the, the, the unsafe, uh, when sidewalks are added, I think they would add security, but I totally understand a lot of the other elements that you raise, but the intent of the council was, was on the, the right side of safety, anyway. Please name and address, please.
Council members, I'm Jean Kyle. I'm a property owner at six oh two Twentieth Street Northwest. This is my husband, Robert Smith. And I got one letter on the third of March after the first meeting had been held, and I, like my colleagues and friends, my neighbors, I saw sidewalk zero, I thought, "Oh, yeah, they're gonna fix the street. Whoop, whoop, we're glad, we're happy, and we're respectful." But number one, we too put in a swale, paid thousands of dollars for a landscaper, and where the sidewalk is gonna go, the water is still gonna come there, and you're gonna have ice pools, and people are gonna fall if you put a sidewalk there. I, and my landscaper said the same thing. A sidewalk here is not a good idea. I don't know, then if somebody does have an accident and break a bone on a sidewalk that is full of ice, because it's where water is going to go, it's creating a problem where we don't have a problem now. And many of us purchase these properties because we don't have a desire to shovel a sidewalk when it's forty below, and so we get our driveway done, and I get the walkability and the community connections, but the sidewalk that goes past our property will connect to the sidewalk that goes through the utility easement. There are no sidewalks then from there forward in the cul-de-sac, and the one that goes across to the next cul-de-sac, there are no sidewalks there. So to us, it makes absolutely no sense, and I think if the policy could be reviewed and addressed, and in the future, please tell the citizens the plan that this is a sidewalk going through your front yard. I would, I would've understood that better. And like I said, I got one letter, and that's it, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other citizens wanna, uh, speak on this matter?
I will speak.
Step the microphone, please.
I did go to the open house, and I did talk to people with the streets. I objected to the sidewalk then. This one I did, I'm sorry, I'm Gary Zimmerman, I live on Sixth Avenue Northwest.
Thank you.
And I did go to the meetings. Um, the sidewalk was not part of that discussion. As I talked to the engineers, I took, we were objecting to one that goes between Sixth to two cul-de-sacs down there. If you stop and take a look at the, if you stand up top of Nineteenth Street and look downhill, it's a roller coaster. It's not a straight shot, and there's no street there. It's just a city easement. You're gonna put a sidewalk down there. I've got a grandson with that. Get on his skateboard and start on that thing and see if you get all the way to Turtle Creek. Because he would start there, go across Twentieth, do the next sidewalk, down Sixth, and down on, down to Turtle Creek. It's dangerous. There's three intersections you would go through, and if you've got a twelve- or thirteen-year-old kid on a, uh, skateboard, he's looking for cars coming through that, and I personally think, um, it's a dangerous situation for, mostly because it's a sidewalk. Kids are gonna love that. Up and down, you got a roller coaster, and I also think, uh, I talked to people with, had the berm built in front of their, their places so the water wouldn't come in, this is just gonna be a funnel. It's gonna, it's gonna come into the sidewalk like this, and you're gonna have a funnel coming down into the street, into, into Twentieth, and they got a water problem now, they don't need more water now. So that's what I was looking at, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, their name and address, please.
Hi, Neil Erickson, at seven oh three Twentieth Street Northwest. I live two doors down from the Moans, and I am largely here to echo all of their concerns. Um, but first, I wanted to say that, um, I'm, we are thrilled that that, uh, street is getting replaced, and hopefully the crumbling curb in front of our property will no longer collect the lake that it does for the past, well, I think ever since it was built the first time. So, um, but, uh, back to the, I, I agree with everyone who's spoken regarding the slope. Uh, if any of you had gotten out there to observe, uh, the, the slope of that, it's, uh, I can't imagine what the final product would probably look like. Also, um, agree with the safety issue and the drainage issues, and really, even the most part is the invasion of the personal space, and I, uh, also live next door to the very residence where the shorter sidewalk is going through, and you have no idea how close that proposed sidewalk is to the home. It's probably five or seven feet away. You can enjoy your backyard, you can enjoy your front yard, and, um, again, just a real invasion of personal space for both of those, uh, projects. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, we, we have a motion from Mr. Baker to scratch the sidewalk from this project, uh, looking for...
Just from Nineteenth Street to Twentieth Street.
Okay.
Just that one.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, that.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I appreciate all the homeowners who took the time to come out, and, um, many have sent emails. I had a chance to meet with many, uh, last week, and I appreciated kind of the personal tour to see all the issues. Um, I, first off, second, Jeff, that we're kind of on the tip of the iceberg here with sidewalk talks. We do have a complete streets policy that, um, from what I understand, kinda came out of a lot of similar discussions like this, where every time any sort of development was happening, it became just a real battle over sidewalks and where they go and how they should be. And so whenever we, as a city, publish any sort of policy, I kinda look at that as a roadmap, so it's a pretty high bar for me to wanna go against that. It needs to be kinda something clear and obvious as a reason that that would not make sense, you know, whether it's geography, what have you. Um, it also creates a level playing field for me with any new development, because I know we require sidewalks when we have new developments. Um, I understand that for some folks, this feels a little bit on the edge of town, but it, it's not really, and it actually will connect. There are parts of, outside of town now, I live in one, that doesn't have a sidewalk, and we're gonna hopefully build some new houses right next to it that will, and eventually they're all gonna need to connect so that people can get places, whether it's parks, school, what have you. Um, I also wanna recognize what the citizens have talked about, that, you know, despite multiple meetings and, uh, kind of our best efforts, the level of communication with this neighborhood, it just missed the mark here. I won't disagree with that whatsoever, I think we've got a lot of agreement on that. So I just wanna apologize for that, and we'll work with city staff to kinda better refine this process, um, so that hopefully it can cause some less stress in the future. You know, when we start to talk about the actual sidewalk and the issue, I, I understand some people's concern about elevation, but I gotta say, Austin in general's a pretty flat city. There's definitely a little elevation there, but it's nothing more than a lot of other cities deal with. I know I've personally walked and biked on many, uh, sidewalks, a lot steeper than that in some of the cities I've lived. Um, the main thing for me, and I, I wanna pass this out, I actually found this when I was kinda doing a little research, and I'll also send some down to the end for, uh, Tom, in case any of the citizens wanna have it. I was doing a little research, trying to find our complete streets policy so I could review it, and I found safe route to schools, which is something that we have as a city published in partnership with CHIP, with the Austin Public Schools as part of the Vision 2020 Project. This likely came out around the sound, same time, I'm guessing, the twenty-twelve, and it literally shows each of our schools and the type of safe routes that you could take to walk or bike there. And it literally shows where there are missing sidewalks that hopefully get added. When I look at where we're proposing this one, it actually connects a corner of this neighborhood that's not connected, that when we put these in, a kid would be able to bike to school in five minutes or less, according to this map. So, you know, I really do think it's important for folks who have disability issues or who just don't want to or can't drive to have options, and walking in the middle of the street, which is what I have to do in my neighborhood right now, isn't a safe way to do it. I also really kinda wanna think about our city staff and the time they put into a lot of this detail and design. Um, you know, if we constantly go against our published policies, I don't know how they're ever gonna have any confidence in whatever design they should propose, because we're just gonna constantly go behind their back and, and go against it every time a couple of, of people complain, and I don't wanna, um, I don't wanna pretend like that's not important. I think everybody should absolutely advocate for what they think is important in their area, but I also know that there are people who didn't know this was gonna be on the agenda today, who do believe in complete streets and walkability and connectivity, who would've been here advocating it had we actually published that ahead of time. You know, and, and so to kinda wrap it up, for me, sometimes I've found our job as councils to prevent from making sure that every corner in Austin doesn't have a stop sign, 'cause we know we've had that in front of us before, or every single corner or street doesn't have a speed bump, because it's really easy for one street or neighborhood to want exactly what was perfect for them, and we have to step back and take a look as a city as a whole. So for those reasons, I support the project as it is at this point.
Thank you, Mike.
I just wanna jump in real quick, too.
Sure.
Um, I'm going to side with Jeff on this, um, only, and the, the only reason is because, uh, because of the communication that fell through, and, and that we do need to take a look at that and, and see exactly what happened there. Um, this isn't just some guy walking around with a plat book. These are our city engineers who we trust. Um, and I realize that, that people are assuming that there are going to be water issues, and I'm going to assume that that has all been looked into by our city engineers.
No, I haven't.
I, I, I'll ask them, and, um, and then people are talking about this slope and how dangerous that is. I would rather have my children on a sidewalk slope than, than using the streets for, for something like this. So to me, sidewalks are safer. I want us to get back to our complete streets policy and stick with it from now on. Um, and I think, I think that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Chris.
I would like to, uh, comment. I am in agreement with Laura and Mike. Um, I'd also like to speak on behalf of the engineering department, that, uh, we have a great engineering department. Um, for us to be told that they're not doing a good job and haven't looked into this is, uh, shameful. Also, the idea of safety, security, and privacy, um, safety and security would probably be better with the sidewalk. Right now, that yard is dark, no, no lights, no anything. I think it would be safer with a sidewalk in there. Um, I apologize for the lack of communication, but I don't feel that we should put off a project like this because, uh, there was some miscommunication. We're here now, we're talking about it, and, um, I support it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of Councilman Baker? Why the motion just for one portion and not both portions of the sidewalk?
You know, I think that, uh, um, with, I've been out there, and, you know, I, I really do believe that a, the complete streets policy says we pull people off of streets, um, for safety reasons. Uh, you know, and I, I, I know it's not popular with all the homeowners in that area, but I'm, I'm fine with the sidewalk. I, I really am, and I, you know, it, you know, you want, I, I want people off streets that are riding bikes or walking or whatever, you know, I'm a, you know, I'm a user of the, the sidewalk and the trail system, and I like to get off the road, you know, I, so I, I'm, I'm fine with the sidewalk. I just don't think that this particular connection for, um, a lot of the reasons that the residents have talked about is a, is something that we should do even with a, a read of the complete streets policy. So it's just, it's just, I'm, I'm just a, uh, not a fan of that one. I would've been a, not a fan of the segment that's already under construction. Well, we're entirely too late to stop that. Um, I think that is too close to the, the, the property. Um, you know, I just, sidewalks are for, for fronts of streets, not for somebody's backyard. It is, and I, I think it's unsafe, um, and, uh, I'm, I don't think it, that does not connect two neighborhoods, two meaningful things, two noteworthy things. I'm using, I'm not quoting the, the complete, complete streets policy, but you want it to go to somewhere, and, and I know that it's me repeating the phrase, "The sidewalk to nowhere," has gotten under some people's skin, and I apologize for that, but I think there's more truth than insult in that phrase. So, long-winded answer to an easy question, sorry about that, Jason.
Okay.
Stephen Eagle, you ready to say something?
Stephen?
It's not too late to stop any of the sidewalks. I think Mr. Baker's referring to this sidewalk right here, that's work being done by Austin Utilities. That would've happened whether the sidewalk is going in or not. So none of the sidewalks have started. So we just want our, the, what we've highlighted on here are long segments of brand-new sidewalk where there was none before, so we're just looking for clear direction on what you want.
So right now, the motion is no sidewalk from Nineteenth to Twentieth. Everything else would remain, including the one between the two cul-de-sacs. That's the motion on record by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember at Large Austin.
Yeah.
Is there, and in future projects, if we don't go with the complete streets, then every one of them's gonna come up in question, like when you're doing a...
What was the beginning of your question? What was the beginning of your question?
Are we going to, at every project, if we go against your complete streets policy, then every project you have in the future, are we going to have to talk about? Do you do sidewalks or not, if we go against that policy?
Maybe we need to review the complete streets to see if this actually does go against the policy, because according to Mr. Baker, it doesn't necessarily...
Actually, as I read it, like many of our policies, it provides a structure and some flexibility, and it outlines reasons why you might make an exception. And making an occasional exception doesn't negate the policy or say that it's a bad policy.
Exactly.
I think we can, if that's the way the council goes, I think we can take out a segment of sidewalk here tonight and still believe that we are a complete streets community and that that's good overall and that we're making an exception in this one case. That's what I think.
And would there be amendment to your...
Yeah, can I, Stephen, I'm sorry. I didn't, and Mitch, I'm sorry. I thought that the little connector between the two cul-de-sacs was work in progress. Can I just change my motion to include that little, that little section? I don't know how you describe it.
Cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac.
Thank you. Yes, if that's how you want to do it.
Do we have an amendment to the motion?
Second.
And enough council discussion, or does anybody want to speak more?
No. I think the only thing I would say is, I think this is really good discussion. And I thank the people that have reached out, the people that have come out. I think this is exactly how local government should work. And, you know, this is a tough one, right, because I can see both sides of the argument pretty clearly. You know, I do think Mitch and Steve and her, Stephen and our staff do tremendous work, and we have a policy that guides the approach that we take. And I trust the engineering work in terms of drainage and safety and things like that. And I think overall, it's probably worth us taking a look at the complete streets policy, because I don't know that I'm in favor of forcing a sidewalk in everywhere. Maybe I am. We probably need some more background and discussion on it. But, you know, as I think about this conversation we're going to continue to have, it does change the fundamental nature of some of these properties. So it's probably making, probably worth us making sure that we're all on board with that before we continue to push down that direction. You know, I think in this specific one, if the people who are going to most benefit from it are the ones that don't want it, I struggle to force it down somebody's throat. And I, you know, I'm a big believer in walkability and connectivity. At the same time, you know, there's the ability a block or two away to get down to where you need to get to. You know, we spend some time in this neighborhood, and it's, you know, it's bikeable. Would it be nice? Sure. But I don't know that the aggregate community benefit for the number of people who would utilize it outweighs the clear harm that comes, takes place with the people that are doing that. And there is something about a cul-de-sac that this changes kind of the fundamental nature of that and kind of the expectation of privacy when moving in, kind of what you think you're buying versus where you're at. And so I am sensitive to that piece of it. And so I would be in favor of Councilman Baker's amended motion.
Okay, so we have an amended motion that, to remove the Sixth Avenue sidewalk along that Sixth Avenue easement. And we had a second. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember-at-Large Austin to delete the Nineteenth to Twentieth sidewalk section and the cul-de-sac section. Everything else stays. So an aye vote is in favor of such removal of those two sidewalk parcels. Councilmember Pashusta?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Postma?
Nay.
Baker?
Aye.
Baskin?
Aye.
Fisher?
Nay.
Councilmember-at-Large Austin?
Aye.
Motion passes four-three, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming, and I appreciate the discussion with counsel. I wanted to be fair by adding it to the discussion on the agenda. I know it was a last-minute add, but I knew there was enough, going to be enough discussion, and some folks didn't know the timeline, so. Appreciate that. Before we go on to citizens, oh, we have one more. Sorry, ma'am. Step up. You had something about deers and ducks and water. Name again, please, and address.
Maureen Norgard, Thirteenth, Thirtyeth, oh, come on.
It's a team approach. I appreciate that. What can we do for you?
My ditch out there, I live out by the old coal burning plant, that. And it's Thirtyeth Avenue, and I'm the last place in there. And they put sewer in out there. And the ditch slid down in. There's a lot of clay out there, and it blocked it. The wild ducks like it. Two dogs across the street likes it, but I don't like it. I can't mow it. I don't mow anyway.
It blocked the culvert?
It's just a ditch, and she slid down, and it holds water.
Engineer Lang is going to tell us all about it.
I hired it done, because I broke my hip, and I can't do any of that stuff, so.
I dug a, kind of like a trench for the water would go out, dry it out some.
Yeah. It has dried out some, but I have my sub-pump hooked up to that. It was okay, they said, you know, and it had to pump out, so I don't pump that water into the sewer.
Mr. Lang, do you have any clarification on this? Are you aware?
I'm aware. I've talked to Harlan about this before. And I can, we can revisit it, take a look at it, see if anything's changed since we looked at it last, and see if we can help at all.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Steven.
All right. Thanks, folks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. And before we go to citizens addressing the council on other issues, Patty Mueller, Representative Mueller, would like to maybe give us a little synopsis of the legislative session. Then she's going to write us a big check presentation for the $14.5 million bond deal. She brought it over there.
Thank you, Councilmen and women, for the work that you do and for your dedication to our city. And thank you. I know it's been a long meeting, and I appreciate giving me just a couple moments to just kind of do a real brief legislative update. Let's start with the good news. The good news is that we got $14.5 million for our wastewater treatment plant, and that's very exciting. I know this is a long time coming, and I had promised you that I would vote for it, and I stayed true to my word that I would vote for that. So I know that there are some things going around that you didn't get your full amount because you were asking for 20 million. However, the truth is, is that we never actually were able to get that 20 million in because the majority party wasn't interested in looking at inflation costs. So we had 14.5, we got 14.5. And so that's, according to me, that's the 22 amount that you asked for, and that's what you got. So, and at one point in time, I know I called Mr. Clark and Mayor King. We were down to 3 million, and that would have been devastating to Austin. And so I'm really, really excited for you to have this money so that you're able to be able to do that. We did see an increase in LGA. We did see an increase in funding Department of Corrections. We did see some dedicated money for small-city roads and bridges and some other money for Mower County for public safety and some other things there. I do have those exact numbers, so if you'd like me to, I can email those out to you, and you can have those. And those type of priorities are really exciting to see. Of course, the frustrating news is that we have, I was with Mayor King the Thursday right after session, and we heard from many of our leaders in the county and from Austin, who are very concerned and about some of the policies that were passed during the legislative session. Number one, of course, is being that payroll tax for the paid family leave, which everyone agrees that we need to have something to retain quality employees. However, we did hear from many of our small-business owners, many of which were minority-owned, who said this is not something that they're able to absorb, because there is no cap, meaning that if you have at least one employee that works at least 80 hours a year, this will apply to you. It also applies to nonprofits who have at least one employee. This is not sustainable for many of our small businesses, nor is it sustainable to many of our small, to our nonprofits. And so I'll be working really diligently in the 24th session to see if we can get some exceptions and exemptions to that. Also, I did hear from Hormel about how they offer actually better, better things than the state is offering here. And for them to opt out, there is a fee to opt out, and it's a sliding scale all the way from, I think it's about $200 per employee if you have 50 or less, to 10,000 employees for 500 and more. And so Hormel is going to be hurting quite a bit. And for border districts like us, this is not something we're going to be able to afford. It's something that I'm going to be readdressing several voraciously in the 24th session. We did see a huge increase in, for our TAB increase and for delivery fee increase. We're also a gas tax increase. There is some housing money that was set aside. There's a fee increase for boating, a fee increase for fishing. So there's several other increases that didn't make sense to a lot of our local constituents as we looked at an $18 billion surplus. So the final total, as we are looking at the governor signing all of the bills that were passed with the majority party in all three branches and all the branches of government, there is a $72 billion budget, which if any of you have paid attention to any type of budgeting over the last year, that you know that is an enormous increase. During my first term, we passed what we thought was a pretty big budget of $52 billion. This is a large increase, a 41% increase in state budget. I am concerned with what that's going to look like in '24, and if I am reelected in '25, how this is going to be sustainable for you. I would like to make sure that we prioritize all of our money to make sure that it is the most beneficial to empower our citizens into your cities and our counties to make sure that they are able to maintain the level that you guys pride yourself on. And so we will see what that looks like in the future. But if you ever have any questions, I know there were several questions about legalizing marijuana. And so there's lots of questions and seeing what that will be. But I would be happy to come and go anywhere at any time if you have any questions about that, and I'm always around. So thank you for what you're doing. And if you have any questions that you have for me currently, I'd be, even though I know you have something that you're ready to go to right now, I'd be happy to stay and answer any questions.
Thank you for your efforts. Thank you. And counsel, any questions? Representative Mueller?
Just a thank you for your tremendous amount of work. I know you had to fight against the party leadership a little bit on the bonding bill and put yourself out there. So thank you for putting the community over the party. And I don't know, based on the fact that you guys seem to go to midnight most of the time in May, I don't know that we should complain too much about 7:14. So thank you for everything.
I would just echo the thanks on taking what I know is a really hard vote. And, you know, both sides, both sides, our representatives were upping in the minority. And I really appreciated your work in making that happen early on and then being there at the end when it finally went through. So it did not go unnoticed.
Thank you for your work, and thank you for your dedication to our community.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Representative Mueller. Thanks for coming. On to citizens addressing the council. Is anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on items that weren't on the agenda? Hearing none. On to honorary councilmember comments. Denver?
I know we're running late, but I actually do have something that I'd like to share with you today. So please bear with me on these 1,135 words, and I will be as quick as possible. So I actually have a quote calendar in my bathroom, and today it told me, "Remember why you started." I want to start this off by saying my personal mission statement. Many of you have heard me talk before, and I always say this. I was created on purpose for a purpose, to encourage all I meet to realize and reach their full potential. I will live my life with unapologetic authenticity. I want to thank you, Mayor, for declaring May AAPI Month. The API community contributes much to Austin, and the proclamation matters because it recognizes, promotes, and celebrates their contributions in addition to validating their basic human rights. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights were developed and articulated in 1948, responding to the atrocities of World War II, including the Holocaust. International human rights law lay down obligations of government to act in certain ways or to refrain from certain acts to promote and protect human rights and fundamental freedoms of individuals or groups. We are now in the month of June, which holds many celebrations, including Pride. In the last few years, we've been delighted to see the community of Austin and people from the region celebrate and support Pride events here in Austin, which benefit individuals and local businesses. The Human Rights Commission looks forward to welcoming the LGBTQ+ community with a formal event in October in alignment with National Coming Out Day. Pride is important because it recognizes and celebrates a community that some are trying to silence. To the opening words of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights are unequivocal. All human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. It is particularly important to speak out about the welcoming presence of Pride and other events, considering the dramatic increase in hate crime against the LGBTQ+ community. According to the Washington Blade, LGBTQ hate crime has tripled between 2021 and 2022. According to the American Psychiatric Association, LGBTQ individuals are 2.5 times more likely to experience depression, anxiety, and substance misuse compared to heterosexual individuals. Now that statistics are out of the way, I want to talk to you all personally. I want to recall a moment from my life as a queer person that I will never forget. It was born out of tragedy. In 2016, I had the privilege of serving as Mr. Capital City Pride in Central Iowa. The night before our parade and our week-ending street party, I woke up to news that made me physically sick. Someone went into a queer safe space, Pulse nightclub, and took the lives of 49 people, wounded 53, and changed the lives of countless others forever. By the time I was headed to the parade route, we still knew little details. Imagine the news. There was a shooting in a space where you know people. It's their safe space, where their bodies still lie on the ground in silence, other than ringtones, loved ones calling their cell phones that will never be answered again. We were told at the parade that it was going to go on, but it's at our own risk, as we were unsure there would be other attacks on Pride festivities or if this would inspire a copycat. I saw grieving faces all around me on a day that's usually filled with music, dancing, laughter, and love. I decided I would remain in one of those lead cars with the rest of the Pride Corps and elected officials. I had my friend bring me these giant rainbow wings, and I stood in the backseat of the convertible, rainbow wings flapping in the wind, music blasting, fighting the pain, grief, and fear we were all living in in that moment, attempting to be a symbol of hope, unity, and community, setting the tone for the celebration for all in attendance. Thereafter and today, I still have scars, because there are nasty people twisted in extremism that simply don't see value in my life. Every time I'm at a club or at a Pride event, I know where my exits are, where I can hide, what I can use as a weapon. I've ducked under tables hearing balloons pop, because people hate me because I love someone. I would like to say that again. Let that sink in. People hate me, who have never met me, because I love another human being, and I've built a home and a life with them. This isn't somewhere else. This is here in our own backyards. Since moving here, many of you know I've put myself out there, because I believe a community is not a place you live, but a place you give. And I want to give, live, and thrive here. Yet, I've been threatened multiple times in this community. Social media accounts pop up and send me messages, then delete themselves. Someone regularly shoots bullets at my home. They're rubber bullets. We find them in the yard every time we mow. Last summer, on a regular basis, a group of young kids would bang on our door and windows, scream "fags," and run away. A man in a restaurant here in town decided he did not like us sitting near him, and decided to voice his opinions very loudly, then told me that I don't belong here. I belong here as much as anyone, and I will continue to take up my space. There is more going on in our community. I dare you to check the social media comments. These are people in our own city, your neighborhood, and perhaps even in a home you know very well. I am a member of this community as much as anyone. I have no agenda other than what I stated in my mission statement. There is another prominent person here in Austin that just wants to share their art and love for music and entertainment. Yet, our existence is threatening, so others try to intimidate us. Austin is my home, and I will keep fighting for the city, for inclusion, for equity, for all to find a home where they can live, give, and thrive. I'll happily use my voice for those that cannot use those for any given reason. I will proudly be who I am, unapologetically and authentically, because I know there is no other queer person, because I know there's another queer person in their own closet that will not come out, but they can't just yet. It is Pride Month, and I wanted to acknowledge this before a group of community leaders, because I need you now more than ever. I ask you as the leaders of this community, all in this room, in this place that we call home, to recognize the significance of LGBTQ+ Pride and to actively support and endorse events that celebrate our rich diversity and amplify inclusion in our city. Your leadership on this will not only enrich the lives of those within the LGBTQ+ community, but will continue to foster a stronger, more vibrant and connected community where hate of any kind has no home. If you still don't understand, you need to stop, listen, and learn. Your allyship will save lives. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you all from this dais. It really means a lot. this opportunity to speak to you all from this dais. It really means a lot to me to speak my truth about Pride. Thank you.
Denver, thank you. Denver, just on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Austin, I'm sorry for what you've gone through on some of those threats. I personally can just say, I welcome your voice and welcome your presence in our community, and we need more folks like you to speak out and, and give us that perspective, because it's, everything you said is absolutely spot-on. So I appreciate you as our honorary councilmember, and I appreciate those comments. Thank you. Well thought.
Thank you all.
Joyce, do you have anything, Joyce?
I can't talk after that.
Okay, good.
That was real, I, yeah, that was very well said, and I, I'm really glad that you took the time to do that.
Just want to go eat pizza.
Thank you, Joyce. Paul?
I would like to thank Dave, who's not here, and the Park and Rec staff, and all those at the pool. They've worked hard the last few weeks. The grand opening was today. Took a lot of preparation, a lot of work, but congratulations and thank you to all those folks.
Thank you, Paul. Jason?
Thank the city staff and the people that support the flags and the flower donations downtown. I know we've had a few different people come in from out of town, and that's one of the first things that they comment about, is how great downtown looks, and it really is a source of pride. So thank you. Great asset for our community.
Jeff?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Jeff?
I don't know if we'll get to this tonight on the work session, but spent some time with Stephen, Mitch, and some other folks, including Craig, talking about automatical vehicle locating, and just a, kind of a message to the city staff. It's super exciting to see the city staff come together and come forward and say, hey, here's an idea where we can take technology and make the city run better. Those are the kind of, I think, investments that we should be looking at, and I really appreciate you guys reaching out and talking about that, and hopefully we get to it sometime. So, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike?
I, you know, all the groups that I am part of got to speak tonight, or speak in the work session. So I just will take a second to thank Denver for really his eloquent words, his leadership, his allyship in the community. I don't think it's an accident that you're in the position you're in right now in June, and I really appreciate you speaking your truth to the council.
Thank you, Mike. Agreed. Laura?
As Councilmember Fisher mentioned, the pool is open, and the splash pad is also open. And as I understand it, the splash pad will be free and open to the public all summer long, so just drop in when you're hot. Also, Parks is hiring, and as our other city organizations. So if you're looking for a part-time job or know someone who is, please consider the city. Wednesday, just two days from now, is Fourth Avenue Fest. The event will go on rain or shine at the park between the library and the pool. We've got music and dance on the live stage. There are 17 different nonprofit partners helping us, and a number of city departments. And I wanted to especially thank April Grabau from our engineering department for being the event coordinator, and also give a shout out to Randy Hoffner, because he is doing tons of work with the Parks Department to get us ready for that event. I also would like to say, we're missing our fire chief tonight, and I believe that is because of a house fire that was just a couple blocks away from me on 10th Avenue Northwest this afternoon. And so thank you to our fire crews for a quick response. Nobody was home, no pets were home, but the home appears to have sustained some pretty severe damage. So we're thinking of, of those community members, the Ruiz family, experiencing a fire, and thankful to our, our volunteer and staff firefighters for their response.
Thank you, Laura. And I just add, before we go to Craig, and I kind of moved up the order of the agenda, I'd just like to also recognize again Werner Schlichter for his darn near 40 years at the wastewater treatment plant, well-earned on his retirement. Also, Judith Fular, thank you for spending time with me today as our mayor for a day. I think as I look back at tonight's meeting, the amount of input from the citizens, the presentations from Nancy Schnebel and John Gary, and Representative Mueller here presenting on the, the end of the session, and then the dialogue with the, with the sidewalks, and certainly hearing Denver's comments, I think she had a top-five meeting. There's no doubt. So, thank you, Judith, for spending the day. Would you like to add anything? People need to hear from you.
Hello, everyone. I'm thankful to have had this opportunity. I definitely gained some very good knowledge, and this was a very nice opportunity. So I'm thankful for that. And also, this was a very interesting meeting. I have never experienced something like this. This was something new for me. I did not know what to expect. But yes, I'm happy to have had this opportunity.
Thank you, Judith. All right, Craig, some administrative report or city council?
Yes, thank you. Seems fitting. I added here, was gonna bring it up at the work session, but our 14 and a half million that we received from the state, just to give you a sense, our overall PFA loan amount was 42.2 million, and had an annual repayment of 2.68 million. When we apply the 14.5 million, that reduces it to 27.7 million, and then gives us a yearly repayment of 1.7 million. So our yearly wastewater fund expenditure from 8 million down to 7.1 million, that would allow our 2026 7% rate increase to be lower than as a result of that. And our monthly sewer bills would go from 66.44 down to 62.10 because of that 14 and a half million. So wanted to pass that along. Councilmember Baker had asked about that, and wanted to share that with the public in general, as well as council members.
Thank you, Craig. Any department heads report?
No.
All right. Thank you all for attending, and with that, I will take a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June 20th.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.